Yeah, item number three, which is to receive the report from the registrar of voters, canvass the returns of the general election held on November 3 of 2020, and direct the registrar to submit a copy of the abstract of votes cast to the Nevada Secretary of State within 13 days after the election pursuant to Assembly Bill Four.
Okay, Mr. Gloria.
Thank you. Good afternoon. For the record, Joe Gloria, registrar of voters, Clark County, Nevada. I'd like to start by thanking a long list of people who provided critical support to us this election season. We couldn't have done what we did without assistance from so many different areas. And first, I'd like to thank the commissioners for your support and the resources as we communicated on what our concerns were. You consistently came through with what our office needed in order to carry out this election. So it really means a lot to our department that you are here for us. Also, the county manager and her senior management team, and a long list of agencies and departments that I hope you'll bear with me because they all deserve praise. Human Resources, risk management, Parks and Recreation with all the facilities that we used in order to provide voting, IT, the cybersecurity protection, and all of the work that they did to support. We can't provide the process that we do efficiently without constant IT support. So thanks to them. Automotive, Park Police for providing security, Metro Police for additional security provided at our facility and also throughout the early voting and Election Day period. The City of North Las Vegas and their police department, City of Henderson, the City of Boulder City and their police department, the City of Mesquite and their fire department, the City of Las Vegas and the city marshals, all of the owners of the shopping centers that let us have polling places on their property. There are many challenges that come with allowing us to come in and provide this service. They've provided support for additional parking, additional security, all throughout the period. So thank you to all of those property owners. The more than 3,400 county residents who stepped up to work at the polls during such a difficult process with the pandemic going on and the large number of voters who showed up to vote. My staff at the election department, who I simply cannot say enough about sticking it through long hours, day after day, without any days off, I simply can't say enough for the effort that they put forth in supporting this election. And then, most importantly, the voters in Clark County. With that, I'll go ahead and read the results of the canvas into the record and then answer any questions that you may have. Results of the canvas for the 2020 general election, November 3, 2020. The results of the November 3, 2020, general election were canvassed comparing the computer printout of ballots counted and the results thereof with the official ballot statement for each of the 1,150 precincts utilized in this election. Of the 974,185 ballots cast in the 1,150 precincts, we identified 936 discrepancies. 710 were in the mail precincts, 121 in the early voting precincts, and 105 in the Election Day precincts. Six voters have been identified who voted twice in this election. The mail ballot discrepancies represent issues related to tracking the process of ballots, moving from signature verification to manual signature verification, the ballot cure process, and counting board process. The early voting and Election Day discrepancies are related to inadvertent canceled voter check-ins, reactivated voter cards, duplicate activations, or check-in errors. Of the 60,109 provisional ballots cast in the election, 57,866 were accepted and 2,243 were rejected. Of those that were rejected, 115 had already voted in the election, 142 voted in the wrong district or precinct, eight were not eligible to vote, 1,925 were not registered to vote, and 53 did not provide adequate proof of residence or identification. There were no tabulation errors in the 1,150 precincts, and that ends my report.
Thank you, Mr. Gloria. Does anybody have any questions? Commissioner Brown?
Madam Chair, thank you. And I'd like to make a motion, understanding that I would welcome comments and questions from my colleagues. Based upon the report of the registrar of voters, I would like to make the following motion, that we accept the canvas of the vote and certify the election results with the exception of County Commission District C. The commissioners received individual briefings in the last 24 hours, and to the best of my knowledge, some of the discrepancies outlined by the registrar indicate that those discrepancies surpassed the narrow margin of victory in the District C race, calling into question the validity of the election results in just District C. I would like to ask the registrar, as part of my motion, to come back at the next regular scheduled DCC meeting with options for a District C resolution.
Okay. Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I appreciate my colleague from District C's motion. I would suggest that under NRS 293.032, our job in conducting a canvas means a review of the election results by the Board of County Commissioners, by which any errors within the election results are officially noted and the official election results are declared. So our job in canvassing the vote is not to ensure that every single ballot has been double-checked and triple-checked and quadruple-checked. It's simply to note any election errors within the election results, to note them, and the official election results are declared. And we are to complete that under NRS 293.387 today, the 10th day following the election. In terms of how to resolve any concerns that are brought up, that is under NRS 293 designated for a recount, in which the candidate can ask for recount, and under NRS 293.405, the costs of the recount are borne by the challenging party. So I can't support the motion. I think that our job here is to note any discrepancies. I think that Mr. Gloria has, in his canvas, noted any discrepancies, and our job is simply to accept them, and any candidate can challenge them through the recount process.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of questions. First, to our counsel, what is your counsel to us respecting the things that have just been commented upon by my colleague?
Which colleague?
Well, Mr. Jones.
There is some authority for the proposition that your job here is just ministerial, that is not been the custom of the commission in the past when there's been discrepancies that make it impossible for the registrar to say that the results are totally valid in the will of the people.
So is the motion that Commissioner Brown offered up something that goes without or beyond the authority of this board to do?
No, I think it's within the authority and the responsibility of the board.
I have a question about the discrepancies. We've talked about a number of discrepancies, 936 discrepancies, countywide, I take it. What is the circumstance respecting discrepancies in District C, in the District C vote? Are there ballots that are District C ballots where you have found discrepancies? And what are the nature of the discrepancies?
Commissioner Gibson, in my review, I have found discrepancies that surpassed the amount of the victory, the margin of victory, in Commission C specifically.
And can you give us a number, and then tell us, give us a sense of what these discrepancies are?
I've identified 139 discrepancies in the Commission C race that follow pretty closely to what I described in the canvas document. Basically, there are records that were transferred back and forth from different responsibilities within the mail process, that canceled check-ins, things of that nature that we can't reconcile. And so they very much, or very well could represent a discrepancy that would affect the outcome of the election.
So the nature of these discrepancies is such that you can't just look at them again, or in the context of a recount, apply them to one candidate or another? You cannot do that?
That is correct, sir. The privacy of the ballot prevents us from doing anything with identifying specific ballots according to a particular voter where we would have the ability to pull those out. It's not possible.
Okay. For now, I have a couple of other questions, but I'd like to wait just for a minute.
Does anybody else have any questions that they'd like answered? Commissioner Sagerblum?
I'm still unclear. So are you saying that 900 people, or this and this particular district, over 100 people show they have voted, but you don't have actual vote counts for that, or?
The vote count will not change. So what we've tallied represent the results in all of the contests within the election. However, we have found discrepancies that we can't explain, that would cast a doubt on whether or not that margin of victory is solid, and that I could certify it to say that it's definitely accurate.
But is the discrepancy that you don't know if the person's vote was counted or not counted? What is the discrepancy?
An example of a discrepancy is the, when you sign in, when you go to vote in person, you sign in at the check-in table, and then they check your, you know, you're given a card and led to a machine. If somebody fails to actually sign in, but is then led to a voter machine and votes, then that discrepancy is going to be off by one vote. Or if, conversely, if that person checks in to vote, and that for some reason he decides he doesn't want to hit the cast button, cast ballot button, but he leaves and doesn't tell a clerk what has happened, there's going to be a discrepancy there in the number of voters in each precinct, and then the number of votes recorded for that precinct.
But you would know the person who...
Not necessarily. Like, for example, if they haven't signed in, we don't know who that extra person is necessarily. Sometimes we're able to do enough investigation that we can figure it out, but not in these cases, not in these particular ones that Mr. Gloria is reporting today.
If I could follow up as well, Commissioner, to maybe clarify, in the course of a day at a particular site, you may have 50 voters who vote at precinct 1105. There are two areas where we track that activity. One is in the voter registration database where we have our poll book that signs voters in. That varies from time to time. What we tally into the system as a vote does not change. So if I end up with 50 votes in my voter registration, but then only 49 in my democracy suite or tabulation for voting systems, I have a discrepancy. And because there were 50 votes in that, I can't determine exactly which individual it was affected by, but I know that I'm off. And so we go through with every single precinct by tally type: mail, early voting, and Election Day. And wherever there's a discrepancy, it should be a balance. It should be 50-50. But where we have areas in a precinct where it's 51 and 50, or 49 and 50, there's a discrepancy there. And so we search through our documentation to identify if the team leader has identified with paperwork to document that, so that we can explain it. If we don't have documentation, then we can't make a determination as to exactly why that discrepancy occurred, but we know we have one. In the Commission C race, I've identified 139. That's the only race in the entire election where we have any concern related to the outcome, and it's because of the close margin. It's a district with 218 precincts. A margin of 10 is very difficult to audit.
So to follow up on that, if there's a recount, the recount would still be the same based on this discrepancy?
Not necessarily. I couldn't guarantee it would come out 100% the same. In 2016, we recounted over 800,000 ballots, I believe it was, and at the end of the day, we had a discrepancy of four. So it was very tight, and all those votes that were cast, it was only changed by four. So that's pretty tight, as far as the process and the fact that we counted fairly accurately in that election. I can't tell you whether or not it would be that close, or there'd be a wider margin with a recount.
But I'm just saying, this discrepancy would not be identified by the recount, because the recount just counts the 50 or the 49.
Precisely. According to statute, we would count those ballots in the exact same way we counted them in for this result.
So I could ask the attorney, then, so what happens if we have a recount, and the same thing happens? Is there, does the winner have a request to go to court or something?
Contestants always have the ability to file a contest rather than a recount, and the contest grounds are more broad. In this case, there would be grounds for a contest because there were enough discrepancies to raise a question about the final vote. So rather than a recount, it'd be more likely that somebody would file a contest, because as Mr. Gloria said, a recount's not going to solve those discrepancies for you.
And just one other question. So if we do certify today, this does not prevent a request for a recount or for the other process you talked about?
Well, for the other races, they could file their contest. You can't file a contest of a race that hasn't been certified, because technically, there's not a winner. Somebody hasn't been declared a winner. There might be other legal avenues that they could follow, but not technically a contest.
So if we don't certify, then are we then saying potentially we're going to ask for a revote ourselves?
That's what the board has done in the past, is set up a special election just with those two candidates to rerun the election.
Can I ask who bears that cost? Do we, the county, is that what we did? I feel like there is a public administrator that we did this for.
It's not the only time. Yeah. It's not an unusual practice. So, but most recently, we did it with the Republican primary for the public administrator. That was just in 2018. We have to, it happens more likely in assembly races, because they're smaller, and then they're more likely to be close than a bigger race, but...
Commissioner Jones?
Ms. Miller, what's the statutory basis for holding a special election? I'm trying to understand that.
In this case, you could use the same statute that you cited, saying that for, because there's a catch-all clause there, you could determine that the will of the voters had not been determined, and hold a special election.
Which statute specifically?
I believe you cited 29345.
All these attorneys up here, I feel nervous. Okay. Commissioner Knapp?
Thank you, Madam Chair. While he's reviewing that, Ms. Miller, could you speak a little bit more to where the proper forum for this to proceed would be? I understand, from your interpretation, it is in this body's ability not to certify, but if we don't, it would go through the court process, leaving candidates some options still to protest the outcome?
If you certified the results, the candidates, the losing candidate could file a contest tomorrow. I believe that's the deadline, is why I mentioned, tomorrow.
So explain to me again, what does that mean?
A contest is going to court and essentially doing the same sort of analysis. The judge would do the same sort of analysis that you're doing today, and determine whether or not the person declared the winner was legally declared the winner.
Okay. Commissioner Weekly?
And with that being said, Ms. Miller, the judge could declare another race?
Yes.
Or the judge could defer back to us, for us to make a decision, because it'd go that way as well? I'm just trying to understand as well.
They would probably, the judge would probably say, yes, it has to be another race, but the county commissioners have to call that, and the circumstances under which it's called. He wouldn't set the date for it, probably.
Commissioner Gibson?
In the motion, it seems as though the objective there would be a special election.
Yes.
Because you can't, I mean, unless the candidate who is behind gives up in a negotiation and says, I'm not going to contest this. Otherwise, the only way you get something that you can certify is by taking, once you're given, you have to take into account these discrepancies, would be if you held the election again. So the question is, what if, do we have authority to withhold a certification and direct that there be a second vote? Do we have that authority?
Yes.
Does it require that all the parties, or the two parties, come together and agree to that end? Or do we have authority, plenary authority, under the statutes today, or in two weeks?
I don't know that it's plenary authority, but you do have authority to declare that there's enough concerns about an election in a particular race, that you won't certify the result and direct staff to, you guys have to call the special election.
So we have that authority today? We don't need to wait for a judge to decide that?
That's correct.
Commissioner Brown?
Thank you. Couple of questions. Joe, the discrepancies that you have referenced, are they common in all elections?
Commissioner Brown, yes. There's no election that goes without discrepancies that are identified. In particular, this time with such a large mail ballot number, that number that I've identified is actually in the thousands of percent, so it was fairly accurate work. It's as a result of such a close margin of victory. With 218 precincts and a margin of victory of 10, it's very difficult to get through that without having the discrepancies being larger than the margin of victory.
So the past practice of disregarding discrepancies in those races, that the total number would have no impact on the outcome, that has been standard practice at the county, and probably challenged on a rare occasion.
That is correct, Commissioner Brown. We have, for as long as I can remember, since I've been here, it has always been the practice to go through and identify what the discrepancies are and ensure that the margin of victory surpasses that so that you can certify.
And the, Joe or Mary on this one, questions that were brought up in the earlier speaker's reference to the letter received, do we have the ability to, or do we have an obligation to look into those accusations?
In the letter that you sent, it's certainly within the board's discretion. There's not a lot of backup on there. You'd have to create your own backup to support those allegations, or perhaps that candidate would provide it to you.
Okay. And to Commissioner Sagerblum's point, so a recount is going to serve no purpose to change what we know today. Is that correct? Other than perhaps four out of 800,000 that you referenced? It doesn't address the discrepancies?
No, it does not. We have the ability to recount, and we would recount in the same manner, according to statute, as we read them originally into the system, but that wouldn't change the discrepancies that I've identified.
Madam Chair, and Mary Ann, correct me if I overstep here, but I'd like to amend the last portion of my amendment, where I indicated at the next regular meeting with options for the District C race only, I would say the registrar to come back at the next regular scheduled meeting with options for a special election in that race only. Would that be allowable?
Can I ask for some clarification, Commissioner Brown? Tomorrow's our next regular scheduled meeting, so you don't mean tomorrow, right?
How about the first meeting in December? Is that appropriate?
Okay.
And during that time, again, I, for one, with less than 20 hours of briefing, have so many additional questions. If we could, during that two-week timeframe, meet with Joe and counsel to find out, you know, all the other pieces that have come into this, and I'm guessing, would it be appropriate, as was mentioned earlier, if the registrar reached out to both candidates to get some sense of what a special election looks like from a programmable standpoint, from a practical standpoint, from a timing standpoint? Would that be appropriate?
That would certainly be my recommendation.
Commissioner Knapp, and then Commissioner Jones?
Commissioner Brown, I was going to suggest, if there is more briefings that's required, which I think would be helpful, do we then want to broaden the direction to Mr. Gloria, rather than make it more specific?
That was my earlier motion, but I got the sense that we were focusing in on the only thing that could happen. That might be the will of the board. I just raised the question if there is more briefings required, or perhaps you're meaning more briefing specifically on what a future subsequent election would look like.
Okay, Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. NRS 293387 requires us to canvass, complete our canvas today. So I guess in terms of reviewing discrepancies before the December meeting, do we even have discretion, Ms. Miller, to do anything other than hold a special election if we don't certify today?
I'm not aware of any other options.
So we either certify today, or we don't, and it has to go to a special election?
That's my understanding.
Okay. So we're not going to look at discrepancies, because looking at discrepancies isn't going to matter, right?
Mr. Gloria's staff has already looked at them extensively, and they don't think it's going to bring out anything that's going to change. Maybe you would just get some confirmation.
Okay. Commissioner Sagerblum, and then Commissioner Gibson?
Just to clarify, Christopher Jones, when you initially said this, you said, I thought, that you interpreted state law to say our only obligation was to certify. Is that, that's your legal interpretation of what's at stake, right?
Yes. I'm not counsel for the board, though.
I know, but I'm saying that there's certainly an argument to be made, that we don't have the discretion to say we're going to call an election. We're just saying certify it.
Anything else? Commissioner, any other commissioners? Commissioner Gibson?
Of course, when the phone started ringing last week, and people from both sides were reaching out, the first thing that occurred to me was, this is easy. We'll just do a recount, and that'll be the end of it. This additional complication, in my estimation, elevates it to a place where the transcendent importance of the commission and its, this institution, the county, Mr. Gloria's reputation, and the entire election department's reputation, in my estimation, is affected by the action that we take. And I believe that the way that we address it, as imperfect as it may be, may apparently only is to do a special election. So I guess for that reason, since there really are no other viable options, we can either wait, and some court tells us to do a special election, or we can get out of the way and get something going so that the people in District C can find a new commissioner. And it's disappointing that there have been things like the ones that are described. I imagine there are other things that have happened. Were any of the ballots returned and not readable, marked in a way that is confusing? Did that happen? I don't even know how you'd do that, but are there any other things? Is there any voter negligence in the way that these discrepancies get characterized?
In the hundreds of thousands of ballots, Commissioner, that were reviewed, there are issues with ballots. That's why we have a duplication board that can take a look at the ballot, and as long as we follow the prescribed determinations that we've reviewed with our county DA, they have the ability to duplicate a ballot, and then we can have the ability to duplicate a ballot, and then we can get it into the system. The system performed relatively flawlessly, because we are able to review the document and make sure that it's not in a condition that would damage the machine. So there were many instances where the ICC scanner was unable to read ballots, but we did see ballots that were identified, we did see ballots that were damaged, that had to be duplicated to run into the system. But nothing that would reach to the level that we call it a discrepancy, that's just the normal course of an election.
So the work that would be done for any race that was on this ballot has been done. Everything has been reviewed. And what we're suggesting here today has no implication, or bears not at all, on outcomes in any other race. It is only in this race. Now, we had a couple up here. I went back and looked at the report, and it looks like there are several thousand votes different, in the case of some of the people whose names were mentioned as candidates who are seeking relief, and maybe there's something they can do, but I see this so dramatically differently from any of the rest of them because of the number. And you've isolated it down to 139, I think you said, ballots, and I just don't think we have any option. I think that the credibility of everything that we do is something that can be affirmed by simply doing that, rather than waiting for some court to tell us how to conduct our business. So I think that's where I come down, but thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Jones?
What is the estimated cost of a special election in this case?
That would depend on how we hold the election, Commissioner, so I will have those costs with me when I present to you and what the options are, and if there are any discussions between now and the next commission meeting, I will be prepared to have those numbers.
If a, Ms. Miller, if a contest were, if we certified today, and a contest were filed, and a judge were to not agree with our certification or canvas of the results, would the cost then be borne by Mr. Anthony?
Not the cost of the election. I think they can recover court costs against the other parties to the contest, but if a judge orders a new election, the jurisdiction bears the cost of that election.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Knapp?
Ms. Miller, could you, could you speak a little bit more to the eventuality that the court would rule, or your estimation that a court would rule that a revote needs to occur?
I don't think, because of the nature of the discrepancies, that any court presented with these discrepancies would be comfortable saying that with the results really reflect the will of the voters in Commission C. It's just such a close race, we're unable to go back and find out which way those votes went, one way or the other. A court would not be able to do that in any event, too. So the court would really be in very similar situation to what the commissioners are today.
Okay. Commissioner Brown, you want to restate your amended motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to make the following motion, that we accept the canvas of the vote and certify the election results, with the exception of County Commission, District C. The commissioners received individual briefings over the last 24 hours, and some of the discrepancies outlined by the registrar indicate that the discrepancies surpassed the narrow margin of victory in that race, calling into question the validity of the election results in just the District C race. I would like to ask the registrar to come back at the next regular meeting. No, I take that back. I would like the registrar to come back the first meeting in December, with options for a special election in the District C race only, and submit a copy of the abstract of votes cast to the Nevada Secretary of State, per AB4.
Okay. You've heard the motion. Any other discussion? See and none, please cast your vote. That motion passes. Can I ask a question, Mr. Gloria, outside of that long discussion we just had? So what happens to the people that voted twice? I hope that we're going to go after them, correct? If we can prove that it was egregious and on purpose?
There would need to be an investigation done, where they interview the individuals. We definitely have the evidence to provide that they did, in fact, vote twice. So I can't tell you exactly in each scenario what might or might not happen, but we'd definitely be submitting them to the Secretary of State.
And then how long does that process? I mean, I just would like you to put us back in the loop, because I just want to make sure that we keep up with the integrity of elections, and we remind folks the importance of doing it the right way, once.
At your request, Madam Chair, I'll be sure to stay abreast of what's going on in the investigation, once we submit.
Okay. Okay. So, Ms. King, does that conclude us?
Yes, it does, Madam Chair.
Okay, this is the second time set aside for public comment. Anybody wishing to speak on public comment? See and none, we are going to go ahead and close the public comment, and we are adjourned.